Welcome, everyone.
Oh, that's loud.
My name is Dee Oliver and I am the Virginia Beach Planning Commission Chair. And I want to welcome you all here tonight. And I appreciate you taking the time to come out and let us know what your thoughts are. So we are going to have a public comment session. And following a brief presentation by the Planning Director and the Zoning Administrator, we look forward to hearing your comments related to short-term rentals. As this is not a public hearing, we will not be deliberating this evening. The Commission is simply here to listen to your opinions and thoughts. Following Mr. DeHaan and Mr. Kevin Kemp's comments, we will ask the speakers to make their way to the microphones. There are one on each side. So it's going to be a first-come, first-served basis. There's no speaker sign-up. And we're going to alternate the speakers. There are going to be stickers on the floor on the side aisles. That one, I guess, is right there. So that social distancing can be respected. We ask that you will wear your mask even while you're speaking at the microphone. And please do not touch the microphone. Please note that each speaker will have three minutes to make comments. And that will be timed. And Mr. DeHaan?
Good evening, everybody. Plan for today's meeting, as Ms. Oliver had noted, is to inform the public of the current status and situation of the short-term rentals, as many of you that are here are invested in. Present the referral ordinance that was referred by City Council to the public and obtain public comment on the referral ordinance as well as short-term rentals in general. Please note that there is an easy way to get additional information, including the workshop that was held by the Planning Commission two Wednesdays ago, which was, and you can go to vbgov.com/str. And there's a link at the top that will take you to all the information. If you have public comment or additional information or issues or concerns, you can send it to str@vbgov.com, which will go to our zoning division so that we can track all the comments. So since November 2019, the short-term rental regulations that we currently have have been in effect. They were adopted in January of 2019. And there was a long time, as Ms. Wilson and Mr. Kemp will tell you, a long time of deliberating and trying to figure out what rules to utilize for short-term rentals. Currently now, the City Council has sponsored an amendment by Councilman Tower to refer a proposed ordinance to the Planning Commission, which deals specifically with the Old Beach Overlay District, overall changes to dealing with required findings, grandfathering, enforcement, and also transition rules. So it's rules that are in place for people that are applying for short-term rentals. And also, because it was referred by City Council, it's required to be reported back to City Council by September. So we are moving very quickly when it comes to trying to do policy changes, which is why we wanted to hold this public comment in this forum, so that we can have the opportunity to hear from everybody as much as possible. Also, City Council directed staff to review all the short-term rental regulations and not just focus on the Old Beach area. There will be future discussion and public comment sessions to hear and to view any of those proposed changes that the Planning Commission or staff may be proposing. So this is not your one time to speak. Please continue to pay attention to the website. This public comment is specifically for the referred ordinances that deal with Old Beach and some of the overall language that was referred by City Council. So as far as our platform that we have that shows us how many short-term rentals are operating in the city, we have about over 2,500 short-term rentals that are operating in the city, which includes 268 where people are actually staying in the home and renting out a bedroom. We have a registered property list, which is individual property owners that are registered and were considered grandfathered for their short-term rentals. And we have about 739 of those properties, which were deemed grandfathered prior to, at the adoption of the current regulations in place. As far as the conditional use permit applications, which many people are aware of seeing at the City Council, Planning Commission and City Council hearings, we've had 195 applications, with 75 being approved, seven being denied, with one being reconsidered, and 116 that are currently in the process of being reviewed. When it comes to the conditional use permit process, that is a heavy lift for our staff. That's a large number of applications. For those that are aware of the public process, it tends to, it is a lot. And we are trying to find a way to best capture the comments that we've heard, as well as streamline the process where appropriate and where to tighten the process where appropriate as well. At this point, we're going to get to the referral ordinance. I'll refer this over to Mr. Kemp. You want the keyboard? Our zoning administrator, sorry, Kay. He'll go over the referral ordinances that are before us today.
... affect the community and, thank you. And a basis for approval or disapproval. There are four required findings we focused on, and this is based on the input we have heard from the applications we've considered. The first is that the number of short-term rentals in the area does not change the characteristic of the neighborhood. This was really based upon, you know, what we are hearing as a desire to protect the stable residential neighborhoods. The second is that parking is readily available, will be reasonably used, and is attractive and environmentally friendly. You know, as you know, parking needs to be provided on-site, but there are alternate parking solutions that may be approved. These solutions, really, this talks to that those solutions must be reasonable enough where people would use them and that they are attractive and environmentally friendly, meaning, you know, we don't want people paving their entire front yard to meet the parking requirement. The third of these is that increased occupancy, meaning more occupants and more groups of people, do not negatively impact residential neighborhoods. We've heard this loud and clear, that they can have, you know, an impact where you move into a neighborhood you think is a single-family neighborhood and if short-term rental comes next, all of a sudden, there's noise, trash, and that sort of thing. And so that is definitely something to consider. And the last is just a recognition that these short-term rentals, they do provide a resource for the city. They are needed. We are a city that, you know, tourism is very important. And there are certain areas of the city where these things are more appropriate than others, whether it's the oceanfront, major entertainment venues, and that sort of thing. So the location of where these are should be considered. The next general conditions, termination of grandfathered STRs. This would be added that if a short-term rental was not active for two years, the grandfathering status would be removed. This is consistent with how the zoning ordinance currently looks at non-conformities. As the ordinance is written now, the grandfathering could run forever. This would give it a two-year lifespan. With civil penalties, right now, short-term rentals, when there is a violation, is subject to regular zoning regulation, which is a criminal penalty, goes through a long period. First, there's a notice of violation, then an issuance of a summons, then it goes to criminal court for a fee. What this would do would increase the zoning office's ability to enforce, making it a civil penalty, and allowing us to assess fines for violations. Then we get to the Old Beach overlay. This is an amendment, again, requested by Council that would allow short-term rentals by right in the Old Beach overlay. The reason why the Old Beach overlay was chosen, for one, it is an established area of the city. It is very defined. For two, it has an actual article in the zoning ordinance already, Article 19, that lays out the requirements for the Old Beach overlay. So what this proposed change would do would change that article to incorporate short-term rentals into it. And it would permit short-term rentals by right in the Old Beach if the short-term rental met all the requirements of 241.2 of the zoning ordinance and the short-term rental was the primary residence, principal residence of the property owner. Therefore, the property owner must live there and reside there at least half of the year. The way the ordinance is written is currently if that requirement were not met, the property owner could not even apply for a conditional use permit. It is just focused on this one area of Old Beach, but again, it is a, an ordinance that could be mimicked and, you know, repeated other places in the city, as there's existing overlays and, you know, relatively easily implied. So the, what are we at? Transition ordinance. This basically says that the new ordinance will take place whenever Council votes on it and as soon as they vote on it. So, you know, whatever applications are in the queue, as soon as Council votes on it, the applications, wherever they are in the process, are subject to these new regulations. All right. Additional changes, these we kind of call as housekeeping issues because they are things that we have seen on most every conditional use permit. We are currently conditioning on each application that events are prohibited. The initial ordinance, when it was approved, allowed events between 50 and 100 people for three times per year. And if there were events less than 50, you could have an unlimited amount. What we've done from the beginning, Council has pretty much put on a condition that says no events are permitted outside of the occupancy of your house. What we're doing is adding that into the ordinance as a requirement. Additionally, we are adding in the residential parking permits that a short-term rental, while being operated, a short-term rental is not eligible for guest permits. This is also something we've done from the beginning. It is stemmed directly out of a concern of parking on the streets in the neighborhood. That. I will give it back to Mr. DeHaan. Thank you.
So City Council did have, has had robust discussions about short-term rentals in general. What we have right now is just the first piece of the short-term rental ordinance that Mr. Tower had proposed, and Council has referred to Planning Commission. Staff does, was also directed to try to take a look at other potential changes. Thank you. Other potential changes that could be put into place. Now, those other changes will need public comment and will need plenty of additional input than just what's going on right here. Our key focus right now is to meet the requirement by state law to bring back the referred ordinance to City Council within 100 days of when it was referred. And that deals with the ones that Mr. Kemp has presented to you. But we do understand that there are other concerns that have come up with short-term rentals in general. And we've been taking notes the best we can as we've been hearing them and potentially even doing any improvements to maybe some of the code, where we can hopefully try to streamline the process and to better protect our neighborhoods at the same time. So as far as the timeline, dealing with these referred ordinances, as I said, the recommendation from Planning Commission is required by September 17th, which is 100 days from when it was referred to the Planning Commission. Currently, right now, this is scheduled, the ordinances that Mr. Kemp went over are currently scheduled for the August 12th Planning Commission public hearing. That public hearing is, again, August 12th in City Council chambers and starts at noon that day. And again, we will continue to take comments on the referred amendments and short-term rentals in general. So please, we want to make sure we're not missing something. I know we've heard a lot about short-term rentals. We've heard a lot from both sides, those that are proponents and those that are opponents of them. And we want to make sure we're not missing anything as we try to log and take in all that information. Our goal is to make sure we share that data and information that's shared with the public to the Planning Commission as they continue to give staff direction, as we help to craft and assist the Planning Commission with coming up with proposed ordinance changes. So I will leave this here as we start the public comment. We do, again, request that you send your comments to str@vbgov.com. That email address goes directly to our zoning division. It provides us an opportunity to get your comments, and you won't have to be limited to the three minutes that you have here. Also, if you want additional information, as the actual hard copy or a copy of the proposed ordinances that are, that have been referred, they're available at vbgov.com/str. You also have a video of the Planning Commission's workshop that was held on July 8th, where they had deliberated and discussed short-term rentals in general, as well as the Old Beach proposed changes. And again, I know I just said it, but since this slide is going to stay up, the Planning Commission public hearing is scheduled for, at least at this moment, August 12th. Again, August 12th at noon at City Council chambers. With that, we are done with the staff presentation, Ms. Oliver.
Thank you, Bobby, and thank you, Kevin. So if the speakers will now make their way to the side aisles, just remember to respect our social distancing and wear your mask. And please don't touch the microphone. You'll each have three minutes to make your comments. And please start with identifying yourself for the record. And we will begin. Thank you. Sir? We'll start with you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. Joe Belik and I live in the Old Beach section. I've lived there for about 26 years now. And the concerns I have are many. And I'll also give you a written copy of my comments tonight. First concern I have is planning in our neighborhoods. For example, Old Beach, I think we just put in a new middle school about four years ago. The whole composition of our neighborhood now is changing because of short-term rentals and the amount of cottages that are being knocked down and three houses are being put up where one was. And now we're having, just about every one of them that's going up now has a short-term rental orange sign in front of them, you know, going to come to you. They're part of those 116 or so that are actually going to be before you. So I take, I hope you take those kind of things into consideration. The future planning for our neighborhoods is very important in getting the mix right in the neighborhoods. The second thing I'd like to say is that the enforcement of all the different rules and regulations and stuff that you're going to have, it's going to require more resources, I would believe, from somebody, whoever's going to be enforcing that stuff. And that's going to be another burden on the city and more, you know, as that kind of raise our taxes and those kind of things. Another thing I'd like to consider as well, that's, I don't think anybody's really brought up much, is the J-2 visa program. This summer, we haven't obviously had the influx of Eastern Europeans and the like that come here to actually do the work at the hotels and the shops and stuff here at the oceanfront. They actually need to stay in the neighborhood here at Old Beach. There's a requirement that they have to be close to transportation, close to where they're going to work and all that kind of stuff in order to work. We've been blessed this summer by not having that problem, per se, but there has been a shortage of housing for the J-2 visa folks. And I just really bring that up as a very important aspect because we, you know, where are we going to, where are we going to house those people? How are we going to transport them around? We don't have good public transportation, and that's a whole nother story to talk about for another day. But that's a, that's a big issue for our hotels and our businesses here at the oceanfront if they're going to thrive. I've been contacted by at least a dozen different hotels. I'm retired right now, but I've been contacted by at least a dozen different places down here. Hey, Joe, you want to come and work? So next summer, when the Eastern Europeans come back, they're not going to be calling me and they're going to be looking for people. And these people that brokered the J-2 visa folks to Virginia Beach, they'll just bypass Virginia Beach if they can't get the proper amount of housing. We've had those discussions at City Council meetings before. I think you guys are fully aware of, you folks are fully aware of, the issue. And I just bring that up because if we have a whole influx of short-term rentals, no matter how well-regulated they may be, one per property owner, the property owner's going to live there for six months out of the year, all that kind of stuff, we're going to have, every one of these places down here that has an orange sign is going to be able to comply, and they're going to be able to have a short-term rental. And then we're going to run out of housing for, for the J-2 visa folks. I don't think we've thought much about where we're going to put these J-2 visa folks in the future when Old Beach becomes just a big hotel for short-term rentals. Okay. Who do I give my comments to?
Next? Okay. I'll just read. I sent an email this morning to the str@vbgov and also to City Council. I did not send it to you guys. But I'll just read what I've got. My experience. Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Richard Matthews. I live at 1317 Mediterranean Avenue. I'm next door to 518 14th Street. 518 has been a short-term rental for about a year. I did not attend the Planning Commission, as I had the meeting, the original Planning Commission hearing on that application, as I had no objections at that time. I did attend the July 7th City Council formal session in opposition to the 518 application, as I had a great deal of objections at that point. The application was rejected by the Council at that meeting, but now the owner is selling the property, and I'm concerned we'll have a similar experience with the next purchaser. The problem of absentee owners. On July 7th, the renters moving out put the trash out for pickup. There was so much trash, and it was not placed so the city truck could pick it up. So it was not picked up. The trash overflowed the cans into the street, into our yard, and other neighbors' yards. Excuse me. We each cleaned up our yards, and one neighbor kindly cleaned up the mess in the street and contacted the city, who came back and picked up. This was a responsibility of the owner, but he doesn't live nearby, and he can't be aware unless one of us contacts him. So the owner didn't know about the problem. The, the problem of proximity, I called it. There need to be additional criteria added to the consideration to become a short-term rental that address the physical configuration of the properties. 518 has two entrances. Both of those entrances are facing the back of my house. Also, on the front of their house, facing the back of my house, is a screened-in patio, which is where people tend to gather. It'll hold 18 to 20 people. From the back wall of my house to the front of the patio is 22 feet, close enough that normal talking is amplified by the overhang. And sitting in my living room, it sounds like they're in my backyard. Add a few drinks and a few people, and we have to turn up the television to filter it out. Vacationers reasonably expect to be able to have a few drinks, tell a few stories, have a few laughs, and stay up late doing it. It's unreasonable for us to have to endure that two to five nights a week. This creates an either-or scenario, either them or us. 518 has not missed a week with renters in the last three months, sometimes more than one group in a week. Another example, Saturday afternoon two days ago. Sure. Okay. Two days ago. It is? Wow. Okay, then I'm going to send you guys this. Thank you. Thank you. I lost track.
Hello. My name is John Carlson. I have a short-term rental in the OR district. I've been doing short-term rentals since 2004. But the short-term rental agreement that was passed eliminates me. Even though I'm in a commercial lot, I'm not in Old Beach, I'm in an OR district, the way the rules are, I'm not grandfathered, even though there's a state regulation that says I am because I've been permitted, and my site plan's all been approved by the City of Virginia Beach. So basically, my land has been taken from me by this ordinance. Even though everything went through planning, everything, site plan was approved, so I'm just want you to be aware, and my request is to take short-term rental out of the OR district. I compete with 7-Eleven, a hotel, and a parking lot. I'm not in Old Beach. So there's no reason for me, as I see it, to be under these rules, because I'm competing with the hotel, the major big ones that are blocking half for me. So that's my request, is to remove short-term rentals from the OR district. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Eddie Burdon. I live in Croatan, but I'm not here to speak about Croatan this evening. The first thing that I want to speak about is what the gentleman just started with. Short-term rentals should not be a conditional use in the OR district. The OR district is not a neighborhood. It's the resort district, it's the high-intensity district, and as the gentleman just spoke, whose property is behind 7-Eleven, across from a commercial parking lot and a hotel, that should be, and he's grandfathered, it should be by right in the OR district. It makes zero sense that it's not. And it should have in the ordinance what the requirements are that you have to meet, but it should be by right in the OR district. And no one should have to have a owner live in it, in the OR district. I'm not sure that any of Old Beach is in the OR district. If it is, it doesn't belong in the OR district. These ordinances talk about compatible with the, excuse me, needed resource in the area of the city. And needed is, I don't think, the right word. I think it should be a compatible resource or a compatible use, not a needed one. I don't think zoning is supposed to pick and choose winners. So I think the word needed is, is not the correct word that should be in there. As far as Old Beach, I think there are certainly areas of Old Beach that are more of a typical residential neighborhood. But there are other parts, Arctic Avenue, Baltic Avenue, that it's a different, and I don't know how we define residential neighborhood, because there's a lot of different types. I think that the, what we've done with short-term rentals at the oceanfront area, for the most part, has been an upgrade in terms of getting a lot of people to come in and invest and build, take down some old, you know, stuff that need to be redeveloped. Bob Scott tried for a long, long time to get 21st Street, 22nd Street redeveloped and, you know, had multiple plans that grew dust. Short-term rentals has been a catalyst to see that it happens. It doesn't fit everywhere, but I do think it has a place. The other thing that's important is that with short-term rentals and these conditions, people are making a greater investment. They have to have professional management available 24/7 by email, by phone. You actually have a lot more receptive, an ability to get action with a short-term rental than you do a standard rental, where somebody's renting it out, you know, a month at a time or a week at a time. And then you really don't have all these mechanisms that we're putting in place for short-term rentals. So I do think that there's a plus side that people should at least take the time to review and understand. I think a conditional use permit makes sense. I don't, I'm not sure the overlay for Old Beach works. And if it, if it does, I think you need to have a use permit option as well, because, again, if you look at some of the pictures that we'll have at later hearings of properties that have redeveloped, redeveloped as a consequence of short-term rentals, I think it's pretty, it's pretty impressive, as long as all the conditions are adhered to. I had a call today about one that's coming up at the North End. The person called because this is coming to Council in a couple of weeks. There was, okay. But it's an example of how the, having immediate contact gets immediate results. Thank you.
I'm Larry Horvath. I'm a resident of Bay Lake Pines. I'm also an officer on the Civic League of Bay Lake Pines. We're a neighborhood of about 350 homes. We are, have about a third of... third of a mile of bayfront beach. All of our neighborhood is suburban, and I wanted to, I'm speaking on behalf of probably almost everybody in the neighborhood, all the homeowners. We don't want short-term rentals in our neighborhood, and I've said that before. I know some of you recognize me, and I recognize a lot of you. The ordinance, in the city ordinance, 241.2, I think it is, is just scratching the surface of protecting our neighborhoods. We have bought into our neighborhoods to cultivate long-term relationships with our neighbors, to know who each other are, to recognize each other when we get home from work, to know we can trust each other, look after our children. We want to watch each other and our children grow old together. And 241.2 just scratches the surface. This is, we bought into this residential neighborhood to protect these things, and this is the most important aspect of a residential zoning, is the permanent nature of it. And a rental of, you know, two new groups of people every week doesn't even come close to being a permanent resident. And the residential zoning is defined, or residence is defined in Webster's, as permanently residing and permanently occupying, and that's what we all understood it to be. And we've had people come to the Civic League and tell us, when we had a short-term rental open up last summer, they didn't expect this to happen in our neighborhood, and they were absolutely just shocked. So I want you guys to know that we expect you guys to protect residential zoning. If you don't, and if you let these businesses, they're basically hotels with absentee managers, absentee landlords, you may as well just get rid of residential zoning and let businesses, whatever prerogative they have, set up in any residential neighborhood. We really want this residences, residential neighborhoods protected. I'm a little surprised I've got to keep coming year after year, meeting after meeting, to explain this, and I hope, I hope the point sinks in with a lot of the new members. We, we're hopeful, we were happy that you passed the conditional use permit requirement, but basically just satisfying 241.2 doesn't come close. You need to have public input. If you see people writing in and telling you that you don't, that they don't want this, and people coming to the hearings that they don't want these businesses next door, you've got to listen to them, because this is what the majority of residential homeowners want. They want their neighborhoods protected. That's all I've got to say.
Madam Chairman, Chris Edel. I am involved in 11 homes in Old Beach that we have rented out short-term for about four years. We've now have them all approved by the regulations. They're professionally managed by, or most of them are professionally managed by, they're all professionally managed, excuse me, some of, most of which are managed by a gentleman that lives in Old Beach, and to my knowledge and discussions with him, we have not had any major issues. Any issues that we do have, we address them immediately. In Old Beach, short-term rentals have been around for years, probably over 40 years. Why? Because it's a great proximity to the resort and all the amenities that our city has to offer. Not everyone visiting here wants to stay in a hotel. The demographic of our guests are families that are traveling here looking for a safe, clean environment, and that want to have a kitchen so they can cook meals and don't necessarily have to go out all the time. Particularly in this COVID environment, it's been even of more demand, because again, the safety and the cleanliness. I don't understand why we've adopted, Planning and Council have adopted these regulations just a year ago, and we're now talking about changing them. We haven't even given them a chance to work. I would suggest that we give them a chance. We want to be a good partner for those that do live in the neighborhood, and would like to find some common ground, but I would say that limiting them to only owners that, that's their primary principal residence is, in Old Beach, why do you single out Old Beach? That's the most obvious place to have the short-term rentals, because it's close to all the resort amenities. So I don't understand that, but I'd like to find a way that we can find some common ground so that the residents would be happy. And we have reached out to some residents, and we're going to continue to do that. We want to be a model for the correct way to do this, and we appreciate all your time and effort that you put in to try to make this work. Thank you.
It is discrimination for y'all not to wear masks and for them not to come up and speak. Okay, but why don't, why don't y'all, this is, this is insane. We're six feet, we're six feet apart. Okay. Y'all are all appointed by City Council, which is a conflict. You do what City Council wants, and this, that's a major problem. The short-term rental owners should be onsite and not use these strictly for investments. We have flooding issues, traffic issues, major violent crime that has yet to be fixed by the city, and for people to call 311 or try to get in touch with these people, their names and a sign should be out front. 2,500 operating that you know of. I've been waiting for that stat from Mr. Tahan. Could have a bigger table so they don't have to sit side by side. Mr. Kemp didn't wear his mask. Okay. Ms. Henley has consistently admitted that we don't have health inspectors and anybody to inspect these. They never should have been approved. Destroying the residential neighborhoods and the ability for anybody to buy a house. Investors from out of state, including the football player who doesn't even live at Croatan. His is not supposed to go before council until September. He's already renting it. He puts his sign way back here where you can't see it. And we've driven by, and there's different cars all the time. I think it would be nice if you gave people a warning like you do at Planning. And this is where the politicians live, and this is where the voters live. We are not considered. And all these special meetings and mandates for masks, there's no proof of what people are sick, getting sick from. It's on, off, and all these special meetings, you know, none of these are properly signed by the mayor. He's never held a press conference, and he doesn't even sign his name. So none of this is, is proper or due process, and the way this is run today is a major disappointment also, that City Council members are not here. Thank you. Yes. Barbara Messner. Okay. Yeah, if you could ask everyone so we can hear, because we haven't been able to hear y'all very well. It's mumbling. Mr. Tahan could have come up here to speak. It's all mumbled.
Good evening. I'm Bob Valley. I'm 1200 Mediterranean Avenue, and I'm Vice President of the Resort Beach Civic League. I noticed you had up there about 2,600 approved STRs. I don't know, I'm assuming they're approved versus just there in the city. One of the things that you also mentioned is the characteristics. You don't want to change the characteristics of the neighborhood, but what you are doing is changing to some degree the fiber, the moral fiber of the neighborhood, and a lot of people have talked about it. And what's happening now is more than neighbors are now policing the neighborhood, where you would normally have a family there that, and an owner that would be doing it as well. And there is no real great enforcement. I mean, you know, if you have a problem, you call the manager, and you're supposed to show up, or she's supposed to show up. That doesn't always happen, and so then it ends up being on the police. The police have much better things to do than running around trying to start noise on a, on a, in a short-term rental. What's also happening is, is there are more builders that are now building strictly for short-term rentals. So now you're even taking one more step back from someone that owns the house to now a builder who has a manager, so you're three back before you even get to someone that's going to be able to help you out. But I have some ideas. Done a lot of research on this, looking at other coastal beach neighborhoods, cities, and then even looking at some others. I do agree, first of all, with the primary ownership. I think that that is important. I think that that at least gives some skin, excuse me, some skin in the game for that short-term rental. But here's some other things that have come up in other areas. Either a percentage or a fixed number of short-term rentals in a particular neighborhood. Having one rental per week, and you know, we kind of talk about, you know, Virginia Beach being a destination location. That kind of plays nicely into that whole marketing scheme of saying that, because rather than having someone in for two or three days and then the other four days or whatever, you have at least a steady seven-day period that someone is in the place, and I think they would be coming here to actually be on vacation. And the last thing I want to mention is, is that most places have no multifamily dwellings are allowed to have short-term rentals. And I think that that's probably, an area that's probably, would be critical of idling in one of those, because rather than having someone maybe 20 or 30 yards away from you, you now have someone right next door to you. And I think that that should be looked at, and I know that in Lakewood, that they're really starting to do that down in the Chetlon Villas, are starting to approve them left and right. So I think that that's, that should be a consideration as well. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. Thank you for this opportunity to address you with the short-term rental concerns. My name is Bob Hughes. I'm the President of Kamla Unit Owners Association. Kamla is a 15-unit condominium located in the heart of the Oceanfront Resort District at the intersection of 22nd Street and Atlantic Avenue. It's hardly a residential area. Our neighbors are the Econo Lodge to the south of us, the Marjack Suites to the north of us, and for those of you that have been around for a while, Hammerheads used to be right across the street. So residential concerns are not something that has, you know, have been a problem for us. Kamla is 35 years old. It met all the requirements when it was built back in, back in the 80s, and of the 15 units, 10 are in short-term rentals. All but one are professionally managed, and you know, as a local owner, I live in Chesapeake. I'm down here at the oceanfront a couple of times a week dealing with things. We have a part-time manager who's at the oceanfront on the weekends to manage the parking situation, and while we do not have enough parking spots to meet the new requirements, I can, I can meet them by paying $600 a year for an off-site parking spot, but in the 21 years that I've owned there, we have never had an issue with parking. We have never run out of parking. So I joined the other speakers that said, you know, why do residential rules apply in the OR District? We're essentially a commercial district. We're not residential. And I think I'll release the rest of my time to the other folks here. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak, Commissioners. My name is Paige Miaraz, and I, I work with Atkinson Realty. I'm the principal broker there. And my family business has been managing vacation rentals since 1943. Almost 80 years we've been in this business. And so when we talk about the character of these neighborhoods, at least the ones that we're talking about this evening, short-term rentals have always been a piece of those neighborhoods. We have gone through the gamut. We understand the issues and the challenges. Just to give you a sense of the extreme, maybe not extreme, but the measures that we go to to manage our properties, our owners pay for extra trash pickup on Saturdays. If that professional company misses something, we have onsite maintenance people that go and clean up that trash. We have full-time people who are on-call 24/7, so when an issue comes up, and they do, I understand that, our people are there to either shut down a party, or anything from making sure a dog isn't a nuisance to, to bigger issues like that. I'm sorry, I'm not going to pass out. So, so to see, to see our industry go through this process has been difficult for us, because we have always tried to be good citizens of the City of Virginia Beach, and we feel like we are a stakeholder in the city. When I, when I look at the regulations that are in place now, and especially the ones that were put up on the screen, I feel like there's a lot of contradictions in this document, and even in the way that we're operating. When the city says that short-term rentals are valued, these, these are like taking, you know, little bowling pins and smashing a boulder on them. There will not be any pins left. And when I look out five years, that's truly my concern, is that these regulations are going to completely kill the legitimate industry. All you'll be left with are the underground operators. My, my goal would be to, or my thought, and you've heard it in different speakers that have been up here today, is that there really are two tracks. There are the professionally managed properties that, that, you know, do not tend to be, they're not nuisances. We, any nuisance that comes up, there's someone there right away to deal with that. They provide families with vacations for them to enjoy our beautiful city, and we're there to help them do that. The other track would be that these, these kind of rogue operators that aren't in town, they're not there to address problems, and, and you know, nobody wants to see trash left on the streets. You know, I've seen it as well. I know, I know a lot of it has to do with those, there's owners that are not, that are not available. So that's, that's really kind of my point tonight, is just to draw a distinction between the managed vacation rental industry and, you know, what we're talking about with these kind of rogue operators, I guess I would say. Awesome. I'm done. That's all good.
Thank you, guys, for hearing us tonight. My name is Mike Spicer. I have two condominiums, two-bedroom condominiums at the same Kamla building that Mr. Hughes spoke about. I too would agree with several people in here that I think we, in the Oceanfront District, should not be a part of this. We, we are surrounded by commercial buildings. The only complaints that we have in our area are people inside of our building that complain about the people rushing out of the bars at 2:00 a.m. and come around the boardwalk. Most of our tenants don't create a problem. We have a secured gated parking lot. We have, I think we're about 12 rented condominiums within 15 that are there. We have eight guest spaces, and I for one am not willing to pay 600-plus dollars for an annual parking spot. Most of us only rent short-term during the three months of the summer. Most of us do long-term rental in the off-season. We have a lot of military turnover in the area, and you know, we have a lot of military folks that come for four, or five, six months. We don't have any of the issues that I've heard. And both of the meetings online have been pretty much strictly all about the housing developments. I haven't really heard anybody speak about Oceanfront. Very minimal. We have seven-night minimum stay in our building. We have gone to three trash pickups a week now. I think mainly because of COVID, people are eating in now and not going out to restaurants, so we've upped that. We are professionally managed. We have a maximum of six occupants. We only have two-bedroom condominiums in this place. Most people do not have two vehicles. I don't agree that this attaches to Oceanfront, but if it does, the only thing that I like that I've seen is one parking space required up to two bedrooms and one space per bedroom. up to two bedrooms and one space per bedroom after the two. So if we are removed from this, I agree with that statement. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for your time and thank you for organizing this this evening. My name is Frank Grimickers of Sandhills Properties and NOV Five-Star Hosting. I'm just going to read the letter that I sent. Our family company, Sandhills Properties, have refurbished two homes in the Old Beach area and have qualified them as Virginia Beach Historical Homes. They are both short-term rentals and are being a permanent residence during the off-season, one of them. Without the income that we have produced from the short-term rentals, we would not have been able to refurbish them and to qualify them as historic homes, thus preserving the Old Beach concept. STRs are a necessity to a vibrant resort area which we live in, which I live in and I also raise my family. Our three children attend Cook Elementary and we are active in the neighborhood as residents, always trying to improve the quality of life in our neighborhood. All short-term renters that rentals that we manage through NOV and own have beautiful curb appeal above and beyond the curb appeal of year rentals and better than some of our neighbors. The curb appeal of the homes we own and manage must be maintained to achieve quality guests who come and stay with us and spend their vacation at our homes and here in Virginia Beach. The short-term rentals provide income for my family, retirement for my parents, and a comfortable income for our cleaning services, which we contract. Local families benefit dramatically from the income that is produced off of short-term rentals. When the city council mentions of altering or changing the rules and regulations, you're also altering and changing the livelihood of families. Families reside here in the Old Beach neighborhood, families who pay property taxes, families who send their children to public schools, families who send, excuse me, families who are citizens of Virginia Beach and always striving to improve the quality of life here in Virginia Beach. We own and manage all of our properties to the utmost standards of Airbnb and VRBO, five-stars ratings all through the past four years. We do this for the neighborhood, our families, and most of all for the guests who visit Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach hosts millions of guests yearly and we are professional hosts. I appreciate your time. Thank you. I would like to note that we are hands-on management. When an incident happens, we are there. We always have been there. Thank you for your time.
My name is Margie Chapman. I'm a property manager of Berkshire Hathaway. And the agent from Atkinson basically said almost everything I was going to say, so I won't repeat all of that. But I did want you to consider a few things. I'm also a property manager for the other two speakers here that spoke about 2113 Atlantic Avenue and the Kamla condominiums. I have been managing them since 1999. And with the extra eight parking spaces, we have never, ever had an issue as far as parking is concerned. And we've never had a guest complain that they were not able to park there at all. The other thing with these parking regulations, sometimes you've got, I believe you have a size requirement on them. In these oceanfront condos, we know that parking is a premium. And I'd like you to consider maybe allowing the smaller-sized parking spaces for those compact cars that can fit in those because we all know oceanfront parking is at a premium. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about was the oceanfront condos, the Dolphin Run, the Kamla, the Edgewater. It is, it is truly impossible to meet your parking requirements. So perhaps you could consider, instead of requiring them to have a CUP, perhaps you can consider them to have professional management instead. My, myself and my staff is on-call 24 hours, seven days a week to handle any kind of complaints, problems, whatever, and we're on it immediately. I'd also like to note if you would consider a garage as a parking space for my North End properties because parking is a little, sometimes not as available in the North End as well. Not as I have. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Robert Cal. I live on 76th Street. And I'm, I realize I'm very late to this conversation. An orange sign showed up across from my house a couple of months ago and I've become interested since then. So I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to ask some questions rhetorically, and they probably have been answered, and I'm going to try to research those answers. But maybe there's something in here that, that hasn't been considered, that, that would be worthy of consideration. First of all, when I first started looking at this, short-term rental, to me, should be different than, or, or more defined, I'll say Airbnb, but I would call those very short-term rentals, maybe limit short-term rentals to, to one week and nothing more than that. Conceivably, if the, if the place across from me were granted, it was deferred, but if it, if it comes back and is granted, there would be three bedrooms, three people per bedroom, three cars, twice a week. Why is that not commercial? I, I don't understand why that isn't a commercial enterprise. I couldn't open a barber shop in my house. Why can they open hotel rooms in a neighborhood? That's my second question. The, the, there was a comment I saw on your handout earlier, the character of the neighborhood. What does that mean? Is there going to be a certain percentage of a street or a neighborhood that's allowed to be short-term rentals and nothing after that? How is that going to, how is that going to be defined? Is there, is there a way to confine what would be, in my term, alters short-term rentals, like you did the scooters? Put some, put some definition on the thing so these things are spread out throughout the neighborhood? In my neighborhood, there is, there happens to be three and soon to be four widows on our street. They are very concerned about safety. It doesn't, it doesn't seem feasible to me to all of a sudden we have hotel rooms opening up in the private, in neighborhoods like this. And then is there any provisions? Should everyone sign a petition that says, "We don't want it"? Is there any provision to say, "It's not approved because the neighborhood doesn't want it"? Is there, is there any provision for that in, in what, in what you're looking at? And then lastly, the enforcement. I talked to the, to a fellow in planning. I said, "What, what happens if something goes on"? He said, "Well, you call the police." I said, "Well, our, our police have plenty to do." He said, "Well, if there's something happening on the weekends, you don't want to call the police, then call me on Monday morning." Well, Monday morning, it's too late when something, there's a party or whatever's going on on Friday or Saturday night. Those, those are the questions I have. I'm going to be seeking, if they've already been asked and answered, I'll be looking for those. But I thank you for your time.
My name is Christine Benz, a resident of Bay Lake Pines for over 40 years. Thank you, Chairman Oliver and Commission members, for the opportunity to express my concerns regarding STRs in residential neighborhoods. We purchased our home over 40 years ago in Bay Lake Pines and raised two children there. We chose not to live at the busy Oceanfront or Sandbridge or in densely populated condo areas. Bay Lake Pines is a quiet residential community. I feel that in allowing STRs, it will change the basic feel of our community. After 40 years, I would not expect to find and would be uncomfortable with a weekly parade of strangers, possibly next to me or across the street from my home. I am also concerned with a potential decrease in my property value if this should occur. For all the same reasons, we in Bay Lake Pines expressed our concerns over a year ago. I would ask you to please not allow STRs in our residential community. Thank you very much for your time. Chris.
Hello. Hi, I'm Doug Hartman. My wife Cindy, we live in the Old Beach District. And I just wanted to leave three thoughts if I could. First one is that I'd emphasize that the word short and short-term rental is the core of our problem. Because when you're doing a short-term rental, you're renting to someone you don't know, someone that you can't fully vet, someone who doesn't take responsibility for what they're going to be doing there. And usually it works. Like 99% of the time, it probably works. 1% of the time, it may not. When you've got 2,500 houses, 1% of the time not working, it's a problem. We've had people on our street that put out a Facebook or Instagram party, boom, 200 people show up. So, short-term is a problem. Second is, I think we know it's a problem because if you look at the conditional use permit process, that's a ridiculously unscalable technique to try and push back against that can't possibly work problem. Right? There's hundreds of applications, a big backlog, the approval process is somewhat arbitrary, and even if you approve them all, you still have the same problem. So I don't think that's a solution. My, my last point is I think if you look at the, the Old Beach overlay, and I'm not quite sure if people have an OR district, but, sorry, I don't know how robbers do this. Anyway, if you look at the Old Beach District, it's about 16 blocks, right? It's mostly west of Arctic, it's mostly north of 22nd and a half. It's mostly residential. And while there doubtless is some history of some older properties that have been successfully rented out, going forward, the Old Beach overlay came into, into being for a reason. People invest in that, upgraded architectural standards. I think the short-term rentals incommensurate with that. Thank you.
I'm Linda Davis. I live in the Lakewood section of Virginia Beach. I sent an email to the SDR BB.gov. I don't know whether you received it or not, but I do want to go over a couple of the points that I made in my email. I have lived next door to a SDR for a year. They have been operating for a year. I've lived there longer. And I noticed that you're going with the Beach overlay about having a property owner be the owner for six months and a day. And I'm here to tell you, that is not going to solve anything because they're not there in the summertime when it's being rented. They may be there in the wintertime, but they're not there in the summer. So they're not going to see all the issues that come up. They're not going to see the fact that there's more cars in the, in their parking area than there should be. They're not there to see that there's more people than should be in the house. They're not there to hear the noise. They're not there to see the trash. They're just not there because they don't have to be. They should have to be on the premise. They should not be allowed just to own the home as their principal residence. Because we, the neighbors around these STRs are the ones that are having to take responsibility for all the issues that are coming up when they're, when we have renters coming in twice a week. The other issue that I see is the fact that the density is too great. They're allowing three people per bedroom. We have a four-bedroom house next door. 12 people minimum are there all the time, 12. We have two people in our house, two people in the other house, a person over here. We have 12 in this house. You try living next door and 12 people vacationing all summer long. It's not easy. It's not fun. They're loud. And none of these renters have been awful. They've just been vacationers. But there are too many of them in a house to be in a residential neighborhood. There should not be 12 people allowed to rent an STR. And, and the, the owner, once again, is not there. He's not the one hearing the noise in the middle of the night. He's only pocketing the money. We're the ones that are having to deal with it. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you for listening.
My name is Joyce Seaco and I have a long-term rental along Arctic Ave. And I am surrounded by weeklies and I don't have a problem. Like they said, the parking is an issue, which the restrictions are trying to solve. But the people are mostly here because they do not want to be on Atlantic Ave with children, teenagers, and subject to the bar scenes and, and, you know, scanty-clad women for the guys. But, uh, nope. And the one, the one thing no one has brought up is my property used to be eight units. Now it's four. And across the road, it was five. Now it's two. So if anything, these are big, beautiful homes and people pay a lot of money. And the city has got to be getting some good taxes from that income. So I'm for it. Thank you.
I'm Denise Holden and I have a short-term rental on Baltic Avenue, the little pink house. And I'm actually going to riff off of what she said. And I've owned that house since 1990. It's been owner-occupied. It's been long-term rented and now it's short-term rented. When, I understand the people who are worried that live in the neighborhoods and think, you know, it's residential, but you can't control who is going to live in your house. I, I have long-term renters next to me and I have a lot of problems with them. You can't control how many parties they have, how many people come to spend the night. People's behavior is the way it is. You can, you can ask for better contracts to be written. If there's problems, they lose their deposit, they're thrown out. Why aren't they calling the police if they're having issues? I haven't had any issues with my people in four years. I can't have seven-day stays. The people who stay at my house want to visit their kid at Oceana. They want to stay, you know, they're down from DC for a long weekend. They're perfectly happy, they're perfectly quiet. I don't have any problems. So it's, I think it's more the intent of what you have the short-term rental for. It serves a purpose. It serves a great purpose in this city. Not everyone wants to stay in the hotels. But it's also not just people who own the house and live here for 40 years. We have a lot of transient people. We have a lot of people that move in and out in six months. I remember what the 90s were like in Old Beach. And you, I think you just need to take it into consideration. I think it's a good thing for the beach. Thank you very much.
My name's Michelle Sheen. I live at 405 22nd Street and I've lived there since I was 16 years old. I'm buying the house from my mother. And I have three units. One unit is an Airbnb, the other two are affordable housing. When I started the Airbnb, I bought a license, I paid taxes, and I'd like to thank whoever came up with the idea of grandfathering some of us in who were responsible business people. I also ran a small store in the farmer's market for 35 years and I want to let you know that inflation, taxes, employee taxes, drove me out of business. In 2018, I closed that business. I depend on the income from this one short-term rental to help pay the taxes that just went up $1,000. You know, I'm hardworking. I don't have an income that comes from some big company. I make my own money by working hard, cleaning an Airbnb. I believe some of the regulations you've already put forth are very good and they're pretty easy to deal with. I have 10 units across the street from me that are also short-term rental. They went in, I don't know, maybe five years ago. They went in, I don't know, maybe five years ago. I just wanted to say thanks for the, uh... I did want to say thanks for the idea of grandfathering in. I thought that was a really good idea. I know it's a big problem. I'm happy to come and speak about it anytime. So thank you for giving us the opportunity. Thank you very much.
Jim Moffett with Sandbridge Realty. I'm sorry that in such a short period of time, we're back discussing short-term rentals. I wanted to start by saying 311 operators received 10 complaint calls in the last three months. There are over 2,500 short-term rentals in the city. Can't understand how this can become such an issue again. I'm not in agreement to the amount of civil penalty fines for the 241.2 ordinances. Let's take trash, for example. There are already civil penalties on the books for not removing your trash can in a timely manner. The code is 31-3.1. The penalty is a $25 fine for the first offense. So let me draw you a picture. Because you're a short-term rental, your fine for leaving out your trash can too long is $200, and $500 for each additional occurrence. Your next-door neighbor's a resident, and their fine for doing the same thing you did is going to be $25, and $50 for each additional occurrence. Plus in Sandbridge, for 19 weeks in the season, the short-term rentals have to pay for their own trash removal on Saturday, not the city. Weddings, signage, zoning posters, do all these warrant a $200 fine? I own a property in Old Beach, I have rented it out as yearly rentals for almost 20 years. I have short-term rentals all around me on the street. I've never had an issue with short-term rental homes. The short-term rental homes have to maintain a higher standard, or they just don't rent. To have an ordinance to just allow principal use short-term rentals will kill the short-term rentals in any area. Look at the demand by the 116 backlog of applications, with majority of them being in that area. The city bases its livelihood on tourism. This will be a cancer that will creep into other areas if passed. Under Section 12B-1, the density of the short-term rental uses the immediate vicinity. Do not change the characteristics of the neighborhood. What does that mean? This gives City Council god-like decision tool to dispute, disprove a short-term rental. City Council is doing this now. They put up a map with the short-term rentals around the applicant of the CUP. The applicant has followed all the rules, and because someone thinks there's too many there already, they're rejected. It's absolutely absurd. Section 12B-2, onsite parking resolutions, are visually appealing and environmentally responsible. Again, giving City Council god-like decisions, even if the applicant has followed all the regulations. And Section 12B-3, an increased occupancy of short-term rental is compatible with the neighborhood. This could stop all short-term rentals in Virginia Beach. The average household in Virginia Beach is three occupants. The only short-term rental compatible is a one-bedroom rental. City Council could use this to reject all others over three occupants. Old Beach is a dynamic and ever-changing community, and based on the heart of tourism. Many of these potential ordinances need to be lined through or rejected, and just leave the short-term rentals alone. Thanks.
Hello, thank you. My name is Jeff Alder, living down in Princess Anne Woods. We had a short-term rental show up in February. It is licensed, but it has no signage, and the owner refuses to put signage up. We've been calling the police because of the issues each weekend for the past month. I think it's an incredible waste of time and the city's resources for us to have to call the police every weekend to address the problems. It goes to resources for the city, and a waste of the allocation that they are. As you would not license an industrial area to be put in a residential zone or a commercial enterprise, you should not license short-term rentals to be in a neighborhood facility as well. The hypocrisy is there. If you would just treat the short-term rentals like you would any other hotel, it would solve part of the problems that you have. But you haven't, but you've chosen not to do that so far. That's my point, that's the problem that we have. I think some of the same issues are occurring in a lot of other neighborhoods. We urge you to listen to your constituents, and take short-term rentals out of neighborhood locations. Thank you.
I'm not sure how this works, but anyway. Hello, my name is Lynn Hume, and I've been a property owner and a realtor in the Shore Drive area since the 1980s. And we've got two cute cottages along the Bay Area in two different neighborhoods, built in the 50s and the 70s. They're quaint, they're small cottages, and we usually don't attract seven-day rentals. Our guests are looking for quiet getaways for maybe two or three days, four days. So twice-weekly rentals are more the norm for our properties, as well as many of the other people that I know in the neighborhoods. We like short-term rentals. We can get in and get out, take care of the inside easier, keep track of the outside. And we have five-star ratings, we don't allow events. I'd like to emphasize that our zoning and property rights were already set and grandfathered just a few years ago. And I'm not sure how this all came up again. We base, this is our retirement income, helps us put our son through school. He helps with the properties when he's home. It's what we're going to live on. We based our retirement on our short-term rentals and our other rental properties. This would be a downzoning. If you're worried about problem properties in comparison to somebody else mentioning, long-term rentals are a problem. I've got those too. When you, you can complain about a long-term rental, but you can't get them out. If you have problem tenants that qualify and they're great, but then they get in there and they start being, you know, bringing all their friends over, you can't, it's really hard to get them removed. And when you live in the beach areas, my goodness. Cars are parked all over the street, there's wild parties. That's the beach neighborhood. That's the flavor of the beach. If you don't want to live there, if you don't like it, don't be there. So, we've already spent two or three years hashing out the zoning rules. And we planned, we planned, again, our future on these rules. It would be a downzoning, and we hope that you won't restrict our rights anymore. And I'm not sure what's going on in the other areas, but our people love our rentals, our neighbors love our rentals. And it's, I don't know. Anyway, I wish you'd leave it the way it is. Thanks.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Betsy Atkinson with Atkinson Realty. We've been running short-term rentals since 1943. I was actively involved in a lot of the discussions that came up with the original short-term rental ordinances. And one of them was about grandfathering, that's what I'd like to talk to you about today. We were told that if we would enter our rentals with the Commissioner of the Revenue before July 1st, 2018, we would be grandfathered. I have relied on that as part of the properties that I've managed since 1940, well, not 1943, but for a long time. I would like to see that this amended ordinance be not agreed upon, and that grandfathering would continue, it runs with the land, and it should be like any other grandfathering, any other type of ordinance. And I would highly ask you not to put it to your condition on this. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Parker, and I'm a 50-year resident of the Beach District. I am president of the Resort Beach Civic League, but due to COVID-19 restrictions, the RBCL has been unable to meet and discuss this issue as a group. I did take the opportunity, though, to listen to your two hours and 20-minute workshop on July 7th, and I was very impressed with the things that I was hearing, the things you all were talking about. I'm hopeful there is a realization of the impact this format is making on our neighborhoods. You're asking the right questions by acknowledging that neighborhood characteristics and stability should be a critical aspect in the process. I want you to know that the resort beach areas are not a party place. They've moved from that point, which was in the 70s and the early 80s, into something now that's very family-friendly orientative. That's why most of us live there. The first question is, do the beachfront residential neighborhoods have a future in Virginia Beach? These include not only the Old Beach neighborhood, but Pine Wood, Lakewood, Croatan, Shattalong, North Beach, and those along the Chesapeake Bay. If the answer is yes, the next question should be, does the present format of short-term rentals provide protection and stability for the well-being and standard of living for those residents? What needs to change? Ideally, no more short-term rentals would be my preference, but I think coming to the conclusion, that's probably not a reality. The present pace of short-term rentals and present regulations will dramatically change the year-round residential character in the Old Beach neighborhood. In fact, these regulations are not beneficial to any real residential neighborhood. Only the investor benefits, who usually lives elsewhere. Listening to the comments that you made, potential changes that you all were looking at, was the Gaitara option, which I think has some merit to further discussion. And until this, until something has changed, or options are changed, my suggestion is you turn down, if you can't turn down, at least add extra regulations or conditions, as has been done so that people will not be able to have events as an add-on to it. The limit of one per week seems to be much more conducive to the neighborhood stability than having it a constant rotating in and out. And I think Mr. Alvarez said he has to retrain the pony every two, every twice a week to be able to keep up what's going on. Reduce the number of people in the bedroom to two. The present regulations permit three, on a three- or four-bedroom house, anywhere from nine to 12 people. You don't usually find that in a neighborhood. The strength and stability of the residential neighborhoods adjacent to the resort area is acknowledged in the Conferent Land Use Plan and the Resort Area Strategic Actions Plan. In the neighborhoods, people have to work. Reduce the time for outdoor music to 10:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And the process to remove a conditional use permit is insanely cumbersome for the neighborhood and the city. Review complaints within the year. And when three complaints are recorded and involve police, the permit will go before the City Council for revocation. Disciplined foster, careful monitoring of guests, and from what I hear, most of these folks won't have a problem with that. Safe, secure neighborhoods with a high quality of life quotient are the bedrock of Virginia Beach, and should be the driving factor in this decision process. Short-term rentals are an intrusion into all residential neighborhoods. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Bob Taylor, I'm a Cavalier Park resident, and also actively engaged in short-term rental in the Old Beach area. And also had the opportunity to serve on the city commission that studied this earlier. So I appreciate you all taking your time this evening to come down here, some of that same kind of commentary that I heard earlier. I shared some comments with you in written fashion. I thought tonight I'd just maybe share a little bit of why I'm engaged in short-term rental. And it started really with an interest in Old Beach and seeing the development down there. We bought our first property on 25th Street down there. And, you know, it's interesting to see the folks who have rented that, and have since chosen to, and they were new to the area in a lot of cases, have since chosen to stay in Virginia Beach, build a house in Virginia Beach. Some of those homes have been built in Old Beach, some have been built at the North End. But it's been a great entry point for new people coming into our community. And I started to look at that development, and particularly the proximity to the resort area, to 19th Street, to the new Sportsplex, the convention center, and the development associated with that, and said, you know, what a great place for short-term rental here, to give an opportunity for families to come down. And, you know, a week is great if you can take that off, but in today's environment, a lot of times, it's a long weekend. And that's where the short-term rental pieces come together. But, you know, if I was going to go into it, it was not going to be something that Bob was going to do as a full-time profession, but I really had an interest in it. So the criteria for me were really partnering with people who knew how to do it right. And that's why for us, having that professional management engaged in it is so very, very important. They are there 24/7 when the problems come up. They know our neighbors. We want to be good neighbors in the areas where we are offering these rentals. And so they've answered that for us, and so we don't have problems. And then to the, kind of the inbound piece of it, of the clientele that we're renting to, when you're working with companies, whether it's an Airbnb or VRBO, you have that visibility, that rental history, the background on those individuals. And it's, and it's all very, very important to keep them out of trouble for the environment. So, some of the things that have been discussed in looking at number of people per residence, and required parking, and noise levels, and curfews, on time, and the like, all make a lot of sense. But I'd underscore the importance of that onsite professional management in a local area to help resolve a lot of those problems, keep those connections with the neighbors, and make it, as Mr. Badon said, not just a needed use, but also a compatible use. Because I believe that's important as well. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Owens. I've been a resident of Virginia Beach all of my adult life. And I own short-term rentals, and they've been grandfathered. I hear a lot of people talking about now versus our future. We want our kids to be able to come back to Virginia Beach, to bring their friends. And I see Virginia Beach as being a vibrant city. Not an old-fashioned city. People have been doing short-term rentals for 50 years in other major cities. We want to bring visitors, our guests here, to enjoy our city. And as a licensed real estate agent, I have people to come here and stay three days, look for a house, and eventually move here. So I want us to think forward and progressively, and not stagnant, and let Virginia Beach grow and be the city that we'll be proud of, and that our children will be able to come home to and be proud of. And let's leave our inheritance of forward-thinking for our children and ourselves. Thank you.
Good evening, Councilperson Nobles. Oliver, and Planning Commission members. Thank you for being here for the last five years, and listening to us on the short-term rental event. I live in Sandbridge. I love short-term rentals. I moved there because I like them, and I'm going to live there the rest of my life because I like them. Whether I have one or not, I still like where I live. I like watching the families come in and out, and enjoy where they are every year. They are not the ones causing our problems in Sandbridge. It is their people that come down for beach-going. They don't have a place to park, they don't have a place to go to the bathroom. They park everywhere they want to park, and they're the ones causing our, they're the ones causing most of the issues where we live. And at the beach. I don't think it's short-term rentals causing all the shootings and everything going on every night. I think it's people coming from local areas doing this. We love our short-term market, and we like to keep it that way. And I'm opposed to any other additional ordinances. Thank you.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Elaine Beckett, and I have lived in Sandbridge for 25 years. I thought about dusting off an old speech, because I've been through this circus tent with you guys for the last five years, for the new guys, but I'm just going to get straight to the point. A lot of you have been asking tonight, how did we even get to this point again? You have been tasked to review the short-term rental penalties for violations without seeing how the existing ordinances even holds up. And I'm speaking only to the general issues regarding the penalties. What happens in Old Beach is none of my business, even though that feeling is not reciprocated. You are being asked to do this quite simply because Mrs. Henley is upset that she cannot get a consensus on council to over-regulate short-term rentals into the ground. So she's punted it back to you. To be clear, the current short-term rental ordinance was voted on in January of 2019, but it didn't go into effect until last November. The first meeting in February at City Council, Mrs. Henley is already asking for lessons learned. What can we do to fix things? What did you learn from November to February? Do y'all have any data? Were there problems with the seasonal rentals from November to February? It makes no sense. It didn't give time for homeowners and rental companies that instituted new guidelines and new practices to even see if they would work. 11 years ago, my husband and I began using our home as a short-term rental during summer weeks and holidays. So it's our principal resident, and we're short-term rental owners. We see both sides. We are not unique. So how will adopting civil penalties for a short-term rental versus a homeowner in our situation come into play? How will you monitor that? How will you monitor that? If my son is five minutes late getting the trash can off the street, I get a $200 penalty because during the summer I use it as a short-term rental? How would you even monitor that? Excuse me, I'm sorry. This is, she's right, this is very hot. So basically, regarding the penalties, I feel it's important right now for you to discern if there really is a problem, because we didn't give a chance to see if there was a problem. Are there, if there is a problem, are there already remedies on the books? And if there are, are they being enforced? Are current violators getting $25 penalties now or is it going unchecked? A remedy that is already in place but not being enforced does not mean that additional remedies are needed. That's something I hope that you will keep in mind. If there's already noise violation ordinance on the books and whatnot, we need to bear that in mind. Make no mistake, Barbara Henley is thumbing her nose at you and every short-term rental you have already carefully vetted and recommended for approval, saying she will not vote in favor for any of them until you fix this mess. Please represent the interests of the citizens of Virginia Beach, not just Barbara's family and friends. Don't let her continue to let you be her bully pulpit. Thank you.
I have a house in Sandbridge. I've lived in the city for over 50 years, grew up in Sandbridge. I know the feel of the neighborhoods. I've got friends that live up here in the North End, friends that live in Shattalong, Croatan. This is the nature of the city, right? You know, we've had short-term rentals pretty much forever. In fact, when I was growing up in Sandbridge, 90% of the houses were vacant year-round, except for the one we lived in. And, you know, it's just part of the city. People love coming down here. We sat through this for, I don't even remember, geez, I hope not five years, but three years we've been doing this. And I apologize to the people that are just coming in late to the scene because they weren't involved during that process, but you know, we hashed all this out. You know, and here we are. And I do, and I hate to say this, but I do feel this. I feel like Barbara Henley and the big hoteliers at the oceanfront are behind a big push. And when I look at a large piece of what's been written, it's very ambiguous as to what is considered a nice parking lot or what's considered culturally acceptable for my neighborhood. You know, I mean, who knows who's going to move in there? Who knows who's going to start making the decisions for that? I own my property, have the right to rent my property. We've been through this. If you can't, you know, put some real meat behind the regulations that are already in place. I mean, when I'm looking at the new regulations, it's like you're rehashing the same stuff. There's even a statement at the end of one section where it says, "It's a viable thing that we really need after trashing," like the ability for people to even rent the property. So, anyways, I just really do feel like, you know, we go through stages in this city where, you know, we get regulations and then big business and people like Barbara Henley and whoever she can rally behind her, get out there and start working the back channels. And, and you're right, sir, they're in the process of breaking down everything that we've done. You know, I don't see how we're sitting here again in eight months or whatever it was when this all went in, September. I mean, it's just ridiculous. I'm outraged. I'm against all of it.
Thank you very much. Are there any more speakers for this evening? All right. Well, I'm going to end. So I'll leave it out, but I just want to thank everybody, truly thank everybody for coming down and giving us the opportunity to hear what your thoughts and opinions are on these short-term reg, uh, short-term essential regulations. We really appreciate you doing this. And I just want to remind everyone that you can provide comments to the Planning Commission via email at the address right there on the screen. And additional information on the process and the ordinances can be found on the website listed as well. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on the ordinances in August and we look forward to seeing you hopefully again. And as of right now, good night and thank you for coming. The meeting's been adjourned.